I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, September 4th, 2019. All Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioners Hampton, Paestrop, and Morrow Cook, whom are absent and excused. This is a time for public comments. For anything not on the agenda, I don't think I see anybody in the audience that has anything to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. Okay? So we'll just move on to the approval of the minutes from July 17. We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'd move we approve the minutes as written.
Second?
All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hosed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Minutes are approved from July 17. We have no council liaison report tonight, I don't believe. And so with that, we'll just move into the public hearing on nursing home code amendments. And we'll be led tonight by Dave Boyd.
Thank you, and good evening. I just have a brief presentation, and then we can go into any public testimony and deliberations. So this is the public hearing, and this is expected to be the Planning Commission's final review of this. And so we are expecting tonight to have a recommendation to take to council. So the purpose of this is to consider an application to allow nursing homes as a conditional use in selected single-family zones. It was a private application from Tethys Bothell, who own the property that Bothell Healthcare is on, the facility on the screen here. The proposal that we're, the staff is bringing to Planning Commission to consider for their recommendation is to add our 5400 and our 7200 to the zones where nursing homes are allowed with a conditional use permit with the following criteria. It'd be limited to sites in those zones, it would be limited to sites of at least four acres that are on arterials. And we are adding, in those zones, there would be an added special setback in landscaping regulations to provide some protection to adjacent single-family zones. The other thing, and here we have an updated map that shows in the bright yellow the sites in our 5400 and our 72 zoning that meet those locational criteria. And there's one edit here to what was in your packet. It identified only one site within the King County zone, but there are actually two. The one, number 17, here was mistakenly put in the group with the R8400 to 9600 properties, but it is our 5400 OP. So it, like the other site on Bothell Way, north of downtown, would qualify as our 5400 zoning. They already qualify for nursing homes as a conditional use since they have an OP overlay. So that's one correction, that's a correction that we don't need to, there's no need to make a correction in the code or the findings, and I'll be making those corrections in the packet that we'll take to council. So these are the five, what, through our analysis and application of this locational criteria, the five properties that we thought were the most likely to be candidates for nursing home site. Again, this is with the understanding that it's, from the applicants at least, that it's unlikely that a new nursing home would be approved by the state in Bothell, in either the King County or Snohomish County portion. The packet did include some new information on that, listing of the number of nursing homes in both counties for your information as requested. So those are the four sites. Some of them are sort of marginally meet the locational criteria because of the amount of critical areas on the sites, but truly to know for sure, you would have to do a full critical areas analysis, wetlands and steep slopes, to determine whether it could, they could fit on those sites. But the main point of this analysis was just to show that there, this isn't solely focused on that, the one site. So there's these five sites plus the current site of Bothell Healthcare. As Commissioner Morrow Cook brought up last time, somebody could buy up a swath of 7200 zoning and demolish the houses, but we think that's fairly unlikely. So process for tonight, any clarifying questions on the presentation or the material in the packet? Any public testimony if there is any commission deliberations, and then a motion vote to approve the PC Planning Commission findings, conclusions, and recommendations with any amendments should you choose to make any?
Thank you, Dave.
Also, looking ahead, then, the next step would be to go to City Council for public hearing on October 1st.
Great. Thanks, Dave. If any of the Commissioners have any questions for Dave, let's go ahead and ask, let's just see if there's anybody in the audience. This will be the time for anybody in the public to come up and speak. And if you could state your name and your address and hold it three minutes? Nobody? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Well, thank you for, I know the applicant's here tonight. Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate it, and it's a very interesting topic on a very important issue. So with that, do any of the Commissioners have any comments or thoughts for Dave? Questions?
Got a question, and it's more informational than anything. In 12.10.040, it's about development and design, and we're saying that adherence to design standards will be required for new facilities, residential in character. Where there's a modification to an existing facility, is the existing character grandfathered in, or would it need to be changed? And with all that said, I don't think the existing one is that far out of character anyway, but just curious.
I think we would apply that to the new construction.
To whatever new elements, and existing, if it's not modified, would remain as is? Okay.
We might encourage an applicant to, if, to make some reasonable changes if it seemed to better fit the code. But generally, we would apply the, these regulations to the new construction.
Whatever's modified. Okay. Thank you.
I actually don't have any questions for you, Dave. I thought it was very well put together. I know we've had at least one other meeting on this study session, and I don't know, I'm getting into discussions, so. Okay.
And I-
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
And we do have the materials from the packet available if we need to put those up on the screen.
Okay. And with that, I guess we can, should we go ahead and close the public hearing then? Michael, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then on this topic. And with that, if there's a motion to be made, and then we can discuss the motion?
I would move that we adopt the proposed nursing home code amendments with the attached findings, conclusions, and recommendations as included in the packet.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. It's easy tonight, there's only four of us. So with that, is there, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, we wrote it on it and carried.
I am sorry. Sorry about that. I'll get here eventually. So, motion carries. Thank you very much for bringing this to us, Dave, so well. I'm sorry about that. And thanks again to the applicant for being here. You provide a really great service to the city, and I sure learned a lot about it. I didn't, I didn't know the facility was located there, so I think we all know now, and it's pretty exciting that it's going to get expanded even further. So thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Oh, yes, you have a comment from the-
Yeah, Jeff Martini, representing the building owner. I was just going to say that we were there today, and if you're inclined to want to take a look at the existing facility, we found it to be in absolutely spectacular condition with all of the plants and flowers and things that they've planted recently, and the weather that's, that's been so beautiful here. So just if you'd ever want to take a look at it.
Great. I think I will do that. Thank you, Ms. Martini.
You bet.
There's no public meeting this evening, and so we will go ahead and jump right into the study session, and will be led tonight by Bruce Blackburn. We have a few topics to cover here, so thanks, Bruce, for joining us.
You bet. Well, first of all, apologies because I don't have a presentation for the capital facilities element that kind of disappeared on me this afternoon. I didn't have enough time to recover it. So essentially, this is a very straightforward one. The capital facilities element will be updated to reflect the capital improvement plan that includes the new fire stations approved by the public safety bond back in last year. And essentially, what we're going to do is we're just going to take the language from the capital facilities plan and put it into the capital facilities element. And interestingly enough, when we kind of started looking at this, we actually don't have to change the policies, it's just the background and support information, inventory and data that we have to update. One of the things that's happening is that the fire department's had some kind of busy couple weeks here in putting out fires. And basically, they have not been able to provide me some of the updated data, and we're still kind of waiting on some of that. We should have that by the public hearing, so the Planning Commission will receive the full amendment process. You'll see a couple places that are highlighted, and yeah, we're kind of waiting on some information here, so. But other than that, if you have any questions about what's in the packet, or some thoughts as to maybe something we could do to improve it, you know, please let me know, and we'll make sure and do that for the public hearing for October 2nd. Thank you.
Just a quick update on the bike plan.
Oh, and I'm sorry. The bike plan, we are still waiting on some information. Public Works has been struggling with a couple things along the lines of what I'm struggling with Canyon Park, and they have not been able to get that to us. We're trying to make that happen for the October 2nd public hearing. It's an important plan amendment that we want to do. I think they've got most of the pieces, it's just a matter of putting it all together. So couldn't do an update for you tonight, a briefing for you tonight, but we probably will do that at the October 2nd. And it's a pretty, again, something that's really important that we do for the community as well as for our biking folks.
Yes. Thank you, Bruce, and we'll look forward to that. Thanks for giving us update on that.
So has anybody got information, any questions on the capital facilities element amendments?
The amendments themselves look pretty straightforward. There was a reference to a regional study. How would that integrate with the city's resources with other regional resources?
Well, I believe what they've done is that they've kind of backed off from that approach a little bit. I think maybe what they've done is, and this is one of the things I'm kind of, a couple questions I have yet to the fire folks to make sure I understand completely what the appropriate area is to do that on. So on October 2nd, we're going to have fire representatives here, but that's one of the things that I'm kind of saying, okay, can you give me some data on this part as well? But yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a complete answer for you tonight.
Yeah, the reference was a regional fire facility with Bothell, North Shore, and Woodenville, so.
Yes.
Bruce, I just had a quick question about, that I'm trying to understand better on the level of service, because I thought, I read earlier that it said, you know, we're meeting the level of service that is currently in the code, that we're supposed to have a person, depending on which department it was, there within a certain amount of time. And then, did I misread it, or I guess it's on CF3 down in the red lettering? It starts talking about 1 minute and 37 seconds above the adopted LOS? Does that mean basically not meeting the level of service? That's what I'm-
I think the way they've structured that is that they've identified some times when they don't meet level of service, and that's one of the things they want to do when they create the new fire stations, have a little bit more personnel on hand as well. So I can get a clarification on that as well. This is information that is basically right out of the report.
Okay.
That would be important to put in there, but I can get some clarification on that for you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Not a ton of, don't spend a ton of time on it, but it's just, yeah, it'd be interesting to, because I thought I read in here that it said we are meeting them, and then I read in, oh, wait. Yeah, anyway, I thought I read earlier on that it says we're meeting level service, and then it said that we're not meeting level service, so just if you could clarify.
And I saw that, and so I think maybe it's, okay, let's make sure we have this really well documented here.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That's great.
Kind of piggybacking along on that level of service discussion, I'm wondering if there's any sort of process for looking at number of calls and sizing the department based on the number of calls rather than the population? Do you know if those are together, if they're-
Yeah, and I think that what they're doing is they're applying what they would term a more of a national standard, which is a population number. And it's also response time. That's really their key, is to get to someplace really quickly, and that's really what they're trying to achieve for their level of service. But that's a really good question. I can, I can get that data for you as well.
Thanks.
Yeah, that would be interesting to follow up on in more detail when the department is here about the level of service questions.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. I will get those going.
I also noted there were differences in different areas. You know, clearly, if you're closer to a station, you're better, but at the outlying areas, there were some challenges.
Yeah, and I know one of the things that we've talked about in the past, you know, informally from, with some of the fire personnel, is that look at that, those mutual aid response, hey, we can't get there, you guys do it, has been a very, very effective tool that they use.
And so if and when a new fire station is built south of the river, will it likely serve just Bothell residents, or would it be more of a joint agreement with Kirkland and Bothell?
I think the preferred would be a joint-
Yeah, that would make sense.
Facility, because, I mean, it's such a logical thing for both those agencies to be providing responses in those areas.
Great. I agree.
We'll get clarification on that, too.
Okay.
You bet.
I don't have any further comments, questions. Thanks, Bruce. So I guess you, we have a briefing on the minimum density planning code amendments? Okay. Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, now we get to really roll up our sleeves. As you're aware, this council initiated minimum density and density activity center plan, policy, and code regulatory amendments, and so those are going to be both those things that may come into the commission. And I just want to start off, first of all, identifying that with, the activity centers were created in 2002, and their intention was to focus areas where we received quite a bit of growth. They're always located along major transportation corridors. They encouraged mixed-use type developments, where you have a mixture of different types of uses within, it's individual building or horizontally. Also, the intention was to get a range of housing types from not just single-family, but also flats or even efficiency units. This is a very important tool the city does to meet our capacity numbers. It's like 20% of our capacity by 2035 target. So it's a really important plan and code provision that we have adopted to get to our target numbers. There's a couple of policy considerations that we have to look at. One is to require minimum levels of density. Should we do that? And where and which subareas should we do it within? We have some flexibility here that we can apply. This is really important for a couple of council goals. First of all, support retaining the regional growth center within the Canyon Park, as well as, of course, it's a really important economic development tool because it includes both residential and employment. Just kind of real quickly, this is kind of some of the stuff in your packet that's really kind of highlighted here, but we have an interesting range of zoning designations within our comprehensive plan and our implemented regulations. And we go from one lot breaker to a no maximum density. Now, interestingly enough, one of the tables I had provided to you is, it shows kind of a big gap between 15 dwelling units per acre, which is the R2800 zone, and the RAC, which has no maximum density. Interestingly enough, the RAC neither has a maximum nor a minimum density. And so that's kind of an interesting element because all the other codes and designations do have a minimum density. Basically, what it says, based upon 150% of their underlying lot or development, the area. This area is important because it has a couple things. One, of course, with Canyon Park, our Puget Sound Regional Growth, sorry, Puget Sound Regional Council, Regional Growth Center framework requires that we achieve 45 activity units, which is either a population or employment per acre, and that's land area. We also have some really important information from King County Buildable Lands that expects within the RAC design, we get about 50 to 80 dwelling units per acre. We also kind of look at some development, existing development patterns to kind of see how this project, how that zoning has done. And see, these are kind of, this table kind of shows some of the earlier RAC projects we've had. And you can see Bearley Village, Emerald Crest, you know, 6387, Urbane Village, which is 18, but it's kind of a funny one because it was, it has a cap at 35 feet, so it kind of halves the provisions that are available.
Now, Bruce, that last one, is that the, what was the former country village? So it's yet to be-
Yeah, that's the, yeah, Urbane Village is a country village, yes, indeed. Yes. And one of the things that's kind of interesting here is that we were getting some pretty good numbers here. You know, 63 or 87 dwelling units per acre is a really good number. It matches what our assumptions were for these areas. But recently, we've had some densities that are quite a bit less than that. Now, this has kind of a checkered area, and of course, we have some Canyon Park separate. We had two townhome developments that were not even 20 units per acre. We do have one pre-application conference called Canyon Park Apartments that is achieving 54, which is a much better number for us, and that's a flat style of, you know, flats and basically a more traditional, taller building-type apartment complex. Within North Creek, we also have a couple of townhome developments that, again, not get into 20 units per acre. That's a long ways from achieving that 50 to 80 that we expect underneath our King County Buildable Lands analysis. Interestingly enough, we just received a pre-application conference from Quadrant on the Seattle Times facility that basically gets to about, about, basically 37 dwelling units per acre. That's, again, closer to what we want, like, to achieve in this area because, again, it's a really important activity center for us. So that's one that's just brand new, and so it's really early in the process, who knows where it'll end up. But that one is kind of interesting because it contains both townhomes and flat style of housing. Within Canyon Park, of course, the Puget Sound Regional Growth Council framework for activity units, one of the things you can do is you can backtrack that from your persons per household for multifamily. We average about 1.5 to 1.9 people per household in those type of units. And so basically, you just do simple math, 45 divided by 1.54 is 30, so that would be the minimum density you would need to get to that 45 activity units per acre. In the proposal you have before you, we're looking at 30 to 45 is the range for us to start talking about, and we can go up or down from there, but that's kind of the range that we're thinking that we may want to start with. North Creek, somewhat similar. Again, build lands identified, King County build lands identified 50 to 80 dwelling units per acre. Quadrant is about 37 dwelling units per acre. And our proposal is, again, to get about to the 30 to 40 dwelling units per acre figure. That seems to be a logical area. And again, these are minimums. The maximums would still be applied as they are now, which is whatever you can fit within that buildable footprint area. Finally, I did a little bit more analysis on Brickyard Road. This is not your memo. I just did this today because I was kind of curious to do a check on an area that was developed primarily within King County before the city annexed in 2014. And we had some interesting developments there, a couple condos and apartment complexes that are, you know, just under 20 or a little bit over 20 dwelling units per acre. And right now, our proposal is that for this area, we'd go maybe about 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre. Again, we don't want to create a lot of non-conform use, and there's really not much territory left for development within that area. So kind of to recap, what we'd like to the commission to start thinking about is, within each of these different subareas, apply the dwelling units per acre minimums that we've got here. Now, we can say, no, we don't want to apply a minimum within this subarea, or maybe increase the numbers. This is just kind of a starting point for us to begin to speak to this topic. Now, the second half of this is employment capacity, and that's a little different topic because we may be looking at implementing something that we have not got in the current Bothell municipal code, although it's really widely used throughout the region, and that's floor area ratios. And essentially, it's a very simple process where you have a piece of property, and you say your floor area has, ratio has to be X or 1. And in this example up there, the illustration is 1. So essentially, if you have a 10,000 square foot property, you have to have a 10,000 square foot building, and it can be in any configuration. You can take the entire site with a single level, you can do multiple levels, and, you know, kind of reduce down the area as you've kind of shown here. This is something that is widely used and is a fairly effective way to make sure you build your building capacity, and that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to build capacity for future employees so we can get to certainly our growth targets for employment, but also, and this works really well within Canyon Park, to make sure we get that activity unit per acre assumption. One of the things that's interesting about this, I had a nice conversation with some, a couple of planners at the City of Redmond, and they think this is a great tool for flex style of buildings. Now, flex buildings are basically when a developer will build a shell. And so, okay, within this shell, I can have office, or warehouse, or manufacturing, or biotech, any of those type of things, and then you customize as you go. As long as you have a good floor area ratio, you're going to make sure you have that capacity that are for, to meet your growth targets. So one of the things we did is that we looked at, of course, employees per square foot, what kind of building sizes are we looking at? And I did a bunch of kind of sources and looked at some things. This is kind of a range of what folks are basically identifying. General office, about 150, microbiology and immunological, which we have a lot of in Canyon Park for sure, 163, upper management, 280, they always get bigger offices. And so this kind of, just kind of trends about what kind of square footage is those types of different employee types need. One of the things we've learned here is that even a small building can accommodate 45 dwelling activity units per building, but we need to remember, this is for building acre. But we have to understand in Canyon Park, activity units are measured by the land, not necessarily building. So a small building on a large lot may not meet our 45 acre, our 45 activity units per acre standard. Basically, if you have a 20,000, 20 acre property, you only put a 10,000 square foot facility, you're not going to get there. So that's why the floor area ratio is important because it would address that situation. You would build a site-appropriate building for that situation. So what we did is we did a little analysis of what we have existing floor area ratios within some of these important areas. And in Canyon Park, our existing floor area ratios average about .42, and the median is about .42. So it's pretty close to, you know, the average and the median. Our proposal here is to go to .4 to .075. Just, that's kind of a range that we think we may want to start on, again, talking about minimums. For North Creek, it's a little bit smaller FAR in those areas. And I think it's, one of the interesting things is that when you look at Canyon Park, there's a lot of multi-story, two or three-floor buildings. In Canyon, in North Creek, it's mostly one-level buildings. There's a few two-stories, but it's a lot of one-story buildings. And again, they have a little bit smaller floor ratio, but again, it seems logical that you'd apply a similar floor area ratio because, again, it's a similar type of an activity center, very important for employment capacity. Finally, in Brickyard Road, this was a really interesting one. We have some really tiny, if you would- We have some really tiny, if you would, floor area ratios within that area. We have a couple of gas stations, which will really bring the averages down. But the average is about .37. The median is about .26. One of the things that was interesting, there's an existing facility in here that has got a 1.3 floor area ratio, and it's right there at that interchange area. It's a multi-level structure there, kind of a brown kind of a color. And it, and it's, it's a pretty high floor area ratio in the City of Bothell. In fact, it's the highest one I've found so far. Nothing has been higher than 1 that I've seen. But again, in this area, because it's really mostly all developed already, and we've got some single-level daycares and some schools and stuff like that, a smaller floor area ratio seems to be appropriate. So tonight, we have a few policy questions, and I've kind of pared it down from what I asked you before, just to kind of get into the real, the real meat of this situation. You know, should we establish minimum levels of development? What should those be? One of the things is, is what different minimums for different subareas? Does that make sense to custom tailor those floor area ratios or those minimum residential densities to the subarea? And certainly, one of the questions is, should we go through the effort of establishing floor area ratios? It's a very good tool, but, you know, that'll be interesting for me to hear what the commission has. And then finally, a range of floor area ratios based upon the proposed use. Let's say somebody comes in and says, well, I want to put a manufacturing facility. Well, we may have a different floor area ratio than we would be if somebody wanted to do an office facility. That kind of is tough for the flex style developers, because then they'll all of a sudden, they'd have to be predicting some type of a use for us. So these are some of the policy direct questions, directions. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, I'm sure you have many, but this is kind of a good start for us to begin and for we can get prepared for the October 2 public hearing. So thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. And just before you comment, if you could bring this particular slide up with the four, the one, the last one you had, just once in a while, just to, just to engrain in our brains, like what we're trying to accomplish in the study session. Thanks, Bruce. Go ahead, and if people have questions, just go ahead and fire away.
Thanks, Bruce. That was very interesting. I had a couple of quick questions. I'm sort of in favor of minimum levels of development in an effort to hit our targets in the future. One thing that concerns me is we're kind of crafting this under the lens of a deficit in apartments and affordable housing that, like, today, at a snapshot in time, when we look at it, we may have a certain need that we're trying to fill versus in the future. The market may dictate something else, we might have a saturation of apartments, and so if we put that minimum on it, then we're kind of locking ourselves into a, a development standard for, you know, until it gets reviewed again. When we looked at Canyon Park, or sorry, Country Village, when we were looking at the comprehensive plan several years ago, that was one of our big areas to have added residential. The numbers were fairly low compared to everywhere else we look, and is it less than we anticipated as a city? Or is it on par with what we were anticipating with the townhome development currently in place?
It's a little bit less. I think our projection was 25 to 30 dwelling units per acre, and I think we're getting just under 20.
Okay. And that's with the proposed development to the east at the front of the property?
Yes, yes. And when I did Urbane Village, I included both 1 and 2, both phases.
Okay. One other question, on your calculation for the floor area ratios, are you, when you're looking at those individual subareas, are you looking at a lot-by-lot basis? Are you taking total land mass divided by, you know, total building area?
What I did is I took kind of a snapshot, you know, and kind of an audit. I took about 10 facilities within the, each of those subareas and said, okay, what does this facility do? And what is this? And I tried to be kind of somewhat random and almost like this one, and I did the analysis on that standpoint. And I think that I chose some pretty good examples because I chose some of the newer facilities as well, some of the older facilities out there. And so that was basically the idea, is to try and get that snapshot so I get a little bit of an idea of what kind of numbers we're getting. Interestingly enough, even within Canyon Park, where we have a pretty aggressive, you know, construction area, we had some floor ratios in the 2.0.265 or something like that range, all the way up to .68. So it's a really interesting how those different developments, how they've kind of crafted them, get a different number. So that's basically what I tried to do. I didn't do, of course, every building in the area because that would have been quite kind of time-consuming.
Sure.
If I could just throw in a little bit of information on the, when we talk about the FARs, just to put this in a little bit of context, a typical FAR for a suburban style office industrial park is about .5.
Okay.
So when you get into more of an urban type of an environment, you're looking at two to four FARs typically.
Gotcha.
Even higher, and like downtown Bellevue, I think is 8.
And with our goal to kind of create more of an urban feel in some of our business parks without overrunning them, it seems like maybe expanding that range from .45 to .75 up a little bit may make sense, but it, it's hard to say because we also don't want to affect what's currently there.
And if I can quickly respond, one of the things we're, we're kind of concentrating on the minimums, you know, with the very minimum we could do. We're trying to leave the maximums to the existing regulations, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One is so we don't have a loss of capacity, and the other is that so we stay within the environmental analysis we did when we first did the, our activities zone areas. So we're trying to keep within that range, but certainly, it's a good point, we may eventually say, okay, we're going to establish some, something more along the lines of a minimum, and a base, and a maximum. And interestingly enough, some of the other jurisdictions, Redmond and Bellevue, example, have a bunch of incentives that they apply. So you can take your base floor area ratio, let's say it's .6, and you can increase that up to 1 or 1.5 if you do certain items that the community has identified as important. Affordable housing, a very classic example, as well as, you know, special plazas and things like that. So there's a wide range of possibilities here.
Yeah. And I, I think those all could be applicable in some form or another. Right now, I don't think our developments kind of, I don't think it's hemmed in by our codes and by any minimum or maximum per, per acre. But it seems like the FAR approach would lend itself to more diversity in end product. Maybe that's just a little bit of a reach, but the example that you showed where you can have a FAR of 1 and have one building take up the whole site, or kind of save some of the land and, you know, use a five-story in the corner to get the same result, do you think that would lend it to more diverse development styles by going to FAR? Or do you think it would just be a different way to calculate the same thing?
That's a good question.
We could look at that a little bit more. I think, based on some of my experience, and I'm, I'm not an expert on how all the development works with that, I, I think it does provide more flexibility because the, the code then is relying on more defined regulations. So typically, when you use an FAR, there may be a height limit that goes along with that. But you don't necessarily worry about, you know, and you have design standards that, that deal with the Balkan scale of the building. But you're not trying to, you're not dictating as much through everything else. You still have landscaping, you still have setbacks, but there's more flexibility in how the building is built on the site, particularly if you provide that, that room within the height limitation, for example. And in some cases, you don't even have a height limitation depending on where, where it goes. So it really is regulated more than just by the FAR and how they put it on the site. You want them to maximize the use. Quite often, what, what will drive the development of the site and the design of the building envelope are the parking requirements and the, the cost of the land. So if the underlying cost of the land is such that it's not that high, they're going to do surface parking, and they're, you know, they're not going to put as much into the building. The higher the value of the land, the more they're going to build up, and if it's valuable enough, they'll fill more of it with, with building and do structured parking.
Okay.
In the, in the Bellevue example that Bruce referenced, in the Bell Red Corridor, what the city did there was they started with a base FAR of 1. Because the land values there are so high, the, the, just the, the economics of development would push it above a 1. But in order to get above a 1, you had to provide affordable housing. And that got you to, I think, about a 2.25.
Nice.
And you could go all the way up to 4 with additional incentives like dedication of parkland, or open space, or, you know, public space improvements, or, or other things like that. So there are ways to build in that mechanism, but again, that, that ties back to the economics of the land itself and what goes there. The other thing that we haven't talked about here, and I don't know if you're going there with this tonight, Bruce, but the FAR can also apply to residential. Typically, we stick with a density, you know, per acre, units per acre for residential. But in some places now, they are going to use, they're going toward using FAR for residential as well as non-residential uses. And the advantage of that, from a developer standpoint, is when you're talking about, when you, when you measure by density, a studio apartment counts the same as a three-bedroom apartment. They're both one unit, and they both count as one unit per whatever, you know, the acre is. If you do it on FAR, you're saying, here's the envelope, you can put any mix of units you want in that building, and it doesn't matter. You can do all studios, which would actually increase your density if you measure that way, or you could do more family units with three bedrooms, which brings the density down, but it still gets us the AUs and gives the developer more flexibility in how they approach that. So there's just something else I'm, I'll throw out there for your, your consideration.
Okay.
Probably a lot more information than you want, sorry.
No, that was good. I have one, one last question. Let's see. Trying to remember what it was, though.
What are you thinking about, Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of questions and comments. First, I, I support moving forward with minimum levels of development. The, you know, in order for Bothell to meet its targets, I think we have to have them in place. It kind of feels like we're running to catch up with some of these larger parcels already having proposals in place, so a little bit of concern with that. And Michael, I think you started to allude to where it was going. I was wondering how mixed developments go, where you've got the commercial and the residential. Seems like we had two standards, now you're saying you can combine them, but that does seem to be the way, particularly on the retail side, a lot of things are going, mixing the uses. So interested in seeing how, how that would be accommodated.
And I haven't quite got to that step yet, unfortunately. I've been trying to get to that, but it, it's an interesting approach. And in my discussion with some of the other jurisdictions, I said, so what do you do there? And as Director Cotterman identified, yeah, you can do a floor area ratio, and you can do residential, you can do retail, you can do offices. We allow you to do whatever it is you, you so desire. So it's an interesting approach.
And in some cases, what, and I'm trying to remember where in Bellevue that we talked about this, but they, you did not count the ground floor retail against the FAR. So that actually gave the applicant additional floor area that they could build above and beyond what they put on the first floor, because it was, in those areas was trying to attract ground.
Yeah, encouraging the street-level activity.
Exactly. In other, in other places, they, they don't count structured parking against the FAR. So again, that's another way to encourage more intensive development on the site and still meeting all the other requirements. So there, there are different, there are a lot of different factors that, that play, that come to play in this type of an approach.
And, and you also alluded to some of the other things I wrote down, how we integrate other interests into this, the affordable housing in particular. We've been talking about public space, is that the term we've arrived at?
Yes.
Public, public space, yes.
Well, now we moved away from open space, it's public space, whatever. You know, there, there are multiple interests that we're trying to accommodate, and boy, it's pretty complicated, and as I said, it feels like that it's running out ahead of us with some of these parcels being locked up. So very interesting to see how, hey, you got all that done, Dave?
And we are playing catch-up a little bit in some of these, you're, you're correct. And that's one of the reasons that, that we asked the council to initiate this, because of the, the project proposals that we're getting in some of these RAC areas that are coming in way below what, what we had anticipated.
One final comment. It does seem, I, I heard you say that, to a certain extent, you're looking at existing use to guide the levels we're setting because you don't want to generate a lot of existing non-conforming uses. I'd be a little concerned about constraining ourselves too much in that regard if, if it's a benefit to, to go larger, you know, for instance, the Country Village area where it came in that low.
Right.
I'd, I'd be disappointed if we let the first one out of the gate drive the rest of it just because they were quick, and the city loses opportunities that would otherwise be there.
And I think that is a really good topic for the commission to discuss, to identify what, how far they would like to go, and we can, we can propose a lot of different numbers out there. And again, one of the things that we have somewhat of an advantage here is that our capacity, our buildable area within these activity zones is pretty high. I mean, we're talking 65 or 100-foot tall buildings, so we, you know, we're not too worried about the maximum, but we want to set a very, very good minimum, and that, that's the important thing here.
Just, I remembered my question finally. You mentioned having a blanket minimum level of development across these RACs, or specifying it based on location, topography, kind of how we typically plan. Does anyone have a blanket policy across their city? And we can come back to that next time. I'm just thinking that would be hard to do because certain development, certain land lends itself, you know, closer to transportation, there's nuances throughout it that I don't...
You're talking about just RACs, or?
Yeah. I mean, have the RACs that we're looking at.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not aware of any cities that have a blanket FAR across the city because it does vary, for all the reasons that you just mentioned. I mean, you have different character, you have different levels of development that you want to occur in different areas. So it can be wide-ranging, and it really is tailored more to what, what the future vision and opportunity is for that area.
Which I, I think is good. It's just, I don't know, caution that we're going to have to wrestle with some tough, tough choices, tough conversations. I think we've heard a lot from King County feeling like they felt the burden of development impact within the City of Bothell early on because of the changes to the, the added apartments downtown, and we'll, we'll have those conversations in these other areas, and it's just part of it.
And I would just add, you know, we are, we are focused on the RAC zones because those are the ones, as, as Bruce mentioned, that were put in place really to increase the capacity of the city overall. But don't feel constrained that you have to apply the same minimums in each of those zones, because as, as we were just talking about, we have different, different visions for different parts of the city. So it can vary. They can have the same zone and a different FAR or minimum density.
Yeah, and, and one of the reasons I pulled up this map in particular is that it does show those activity areas, and as you go up and down, it's mostly a north-south orientation, you really do have some different character within those areas that I think is, is appropriate for, appropriate for us to start trying to nail that down.
Harkening back to our previous agenda item and looking at these types of development, I hope we also consider the emergency services as we do this. And you talk about citing facilities, size of fire facilities, the type of developments and the density of these will really drive those needs as well.
Yep. Valid point. Carson?
I feel that this is a really important tool to use, and I'm all for using minimum density, City of Bothell, from a climate and sustainability perspective as well. I think that's really important, not just in terms of getting the financial resources available to the city based on minimum development, but also just taking care of the land that we have and using it first. So that's my response to the first question. In terms of this blanket versus differential density minimums per area, I know from my perspective, as a geologist, the North Creek area is a liquefaction zone, and so economically, it's really difficult to put in two-story facilities or multi-story facilities in areas that have really shallow groundwater situation, and so that might be somewhat of why we see just an inherent lower density in North Creek now than we do in, say, Canyon Park. So I don't think that using a blanket density is, is really warranted for FAR, but the FAR does seem like a good tool to use. I'm wondering how, like, critical areas... I'm wondering how, like, critical areas and, you know, parking minimums would play into that, especially from more small infill and incremental development in the city. I know parking minimums are really difficult as it is, and so if we're looking to transition empty lots and vacant lots and parcels that are small, that might be difficult for smaller developers to get an FAR with the existing parking minimums that the city is using. But again, having a range based on the proposed uses, that would be probably a solution in that case. So that's what I kind of have in terms of responding to that. I think it's really exciting. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Bruce, can you pull up the map of the different RACs throughout the city?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. My first question is, thanks for this topic, I think it is a great topic, it sounds like a good direction to go in. The Thrasher's Corner Red Hawk dwelling units per acre minimums, I will, just on the surface, had a little bit of a concern as to why, for instance, that one would be the highest.
And I'm sorry, I didn't explain that very well. That is in unincorporated Snohomish County, so it's actually not in the City of Bothell. Snohomish County has applied a very high development potential to the site. I mean, we're talking 90-foot-tall buildings in the area, as well as they have assigned a pretty high capacity for that area, and I think it's in the 50 or 60 range. So when I looked at some of their analysis on that site, I said, oh my goodness, if we're going to match that, we would kind of go with this pretty high number. We certainly don't have to. And one of the things that we may even want to think about, and I'm going to go out and turn here a little bit, but we may say, look, we don't have a desire to do something on Thrasher's Corner at this time, because we're trying to concentrate on some of these other areas. And that's why the, okay, which subareas do we really want to focus here on makes a lot of sense. Certainly, North Creek and Canyon Park have got to be a main focus of this. But, you know, Brickyard Road is mostly all developed. Thrasher's Corner is, again, mostly all developed, although it's in Snohomish County. So, you know, we may have some ability to say, yeah, we'll let those areas go for now. And again, applying this sub-area-specific type of approach, and, you know, say, well, those areas, we'll get to later when we do a little bit more planning.
Okay, thanks. And I guess, oh, Michael?
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask for a clarification. When we talk about Thrasher's Corner, a portion of that subarea is within the city, south of 524.
Actually, no, that's still...
Are we counting that as Canyon Park?
Canyon Park, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Sorry, that's a good point.
We're counting that in Canyon Park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If I can zoom in here. Oh, that's okay.
And I guess the one thing, I remember historically, there was some, I think, hopefully I'm not misstating this, there was some shortfall on Snohomish County's side with regards to providing traffic impact fees and getting, and not putting in the infrastructure, but allowing development to happen in certain areas or particular type of development. And I guess, I don't necessarily dislike this dwelling units breaker minimums, and you were kind of extrapolating this, I guess, from what Snohomish County said. Are they planning on putting in quite a bit more infrastructure there with regards to moving people around? Because that's a pretty, there's not a whole lot of places to go there. It's like Mulby Road, 527, at least, you know, in Canyon Park, you have 405, and you have, I mean, you have 405, so.
Yeah.
It's completely different animals, so.
And as we'll talk about in Canyon Park, we do have some transportation challenges in this area that have to be addressed. And you're right, that would fall squarely on the Thrasher's Corner area as well.
Because I would think that, in my mind, that I could almost see, not necessarily we do it, but I feel like almost those two should almost be flipped with regards to what the numbers are here, because I feel like the ability to be able to move people in the Canyon Park area is so much greater. If you provided, you provide infrastructure for it, as opposed to, unless there's some kind of new light rail that's coming through that I don't know about.
BRT, though.
That's true.
Bus rapid transit.
That's true. The BRT's coming, that's true. So anyway, that's that comment there.
Well, I think that's a worthy thing to think, kind of think about, too, is that these are just some, you know, things to get this discussion started. Maybe we should go a little bit more aggressive with this. Yeah, I mean, that'd be something that I'd be really kind of curious to hear from the commission on that.
I'm going to hold my cards close on that one so far, and it's a little too early for, but I just, because I was just comparing those two things and the ability for people to move around, so. Carson, do you have?
Yeah, I noticed in one of your other slides, you had included Filbert Wine Sap area.
And I'm, and one of the things I did is that I forgot about that little tiny, teeny portion in the Filbert Wine Sap area that is, has an RAC. It is about as far north as our, it is as far north as our planning area goes, and it's right up there, you can see it right there in the very top part. It's virtually all developed as well. You know, there's one, two, three townhome projects that cover the area. Okay, cool. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
So, I mean, we were just kind of coming across it, initially, what are the kind of thoughts with regards to, do you think Bruce is, and we haven't had a long time to think about it, but what do you think directionally with regards to Bruce? Can you show us, we can continue to talk about it, but can you go to that last slide again?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get.
Oh, got it, yeah.
It's kind of slow.
And related to that question, Mr. Chair, is what additional information would be helpful to you as we work through this? Understanding, this is sort of your first go at it.
Well, to reiterate a little bit of what I said previously, how we integrate these other interests, I think is really important. The open space, the affordable housing, you know, we don't want to drive, meeting development goals is essential, but keeping those other things in mind are important as well. Schedule keeps coming back to me, too. The clock is ticking on all these properties, proposals are being made, we've got facts on the ground. So I'm always contradicting what I said previously, because it'd be great to take an expansive look at all this. On the other hand, we may have a perfect plan, and it's already too late. So really balancing that, I think, is a challenge that we need to look at. Do you have a schedule you're thinking about for this?
Yes, we want to have this implemented by the end of this year.
Okay.
It's part of our annual cycle amendments.
Okay. How, what kind of outreach is there to major property owners in these activity centers?
That's the next step. And one of the things that we kind of, we kind of want to get a feel from the commission, perhaps if the commission said, look, we really don't think we should look over here or there and like that, then it would kind of reduce the number. But the first group we're going to talk to, of course, is Canyon Park, because they are directly affected by this. We're going to talk to some of the folks, we have a couple people from North Creek that are kind of like their facilities, planning and management folks. And then we're going to do a pretty strong mail-out effort to property owners within this area and say, we've got this thought process here, how can we make this work for you and the city? And kind of give them a little bit more background. And one of the things I was trying to do this week is put some more information on the webpage, and we just kind of refer them to an area, and this is a great help for us as well, because it can help us identify some other areas that we're going to investigate. So there's some work to be done yet, absolutely.
Well, reserving my right to change my mind as more information comes up, just running down your questions, I do think we need minimum levels of development to meet our long-term goals. And as Carson indicated, different minimums in different subareas is, I think, a necessity. They're different, different in character, both neighborhood character and also just physical character. A minimum floor areas, I think, is intriguing, and I'd like to see us take a look at it. But you pointed out a problem with the FAR based on use that I think is almost a fatal flaw. You're pretty much locking property owner slash developer into what the end use will be in the permit stage, and I don't think that would be a good way to go. So that's my take on your four. And then the fifth area of direction, I would say, is to make sure we consider these other policy interests.
And we've been giving some thought to the issue of flex space or undefined, so that could be a category all its own. So we might have one for office, we might have another for manufacturing, we might have another for undefined, and we would set a little different minimum for that, and maybe in that case, there would be a range.
And you also referenced potential for exclusions, street-level retail, for instance, in areas where you're encouraging that parking, which I think is becoming more of an issue.
Structure parking could be, yeah. So I think there are some ways to address that issue. It is problematic, but I think there may be some creative ways that we can try to address that.
I don't mean to get too off-topic, it's on the topic, but with regards to something Carson mentioned earlier, I'm really glad that he said the word, because we don't, climate, like, we don't, we see what's happening around the world, and while we're Bothell, we're trying to meet certain targets for density and not have sprawl, we do need energy to run our system as a city. And I just, I would love to see, I don't know how this gets implemented, I don't think it does this year, but sometime in the future that we, I don't know if we just encourage it or make a requirement for some of these, I feel like in the RACs, there's such a great opportunity to integrate in certain types of renewable energies, whether it be solar capacity or geothermal. I just, I feel bad when we're building and we're just relying on somebody else, somewhere else, to create the energy that we use. Even if it's just a little bit, I don't know what that looks like, but I thought I'd just throw that in there. I think that might be for a different time, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
And that is one of the other factors that could be, that could be part of the incentive system, if they provide for green building or some level of green building, that might get them some additional FAR. That doesn't necessarily play into the minimums, however. Those, that's the type of thing that goes into allowing additional.
Right, yeah.
So, but you almost have to have a minimum to start with in order to set those expectations, and from there you can go to a base, which is what they're allowed to do outright without providing any, you know, additional bonus items.
So you haven't, I would love to see that as a potential topic of, as an incentive for additional capacity.
Just my take, I know it might be complicated, but I think it's as worthy as anything else we're looking at, whether that's affordable housing or open space. I think trying to examine it between now and the end of the year would be useful, whether that's PV incentives or, you know, some way to try to get the ball rolling. I think it's a good idea.
And just to be realistic in that, in terms of our timeframe and our capacity to do that, I think that's a great idea, and we can look at it, we can start to look at that. I don't believe we could complete that work by the end of this year. So I think our initial focus is going to be on getting those minimums in place for a lot of the reasons we've talked about, just in terms of timing and the number of projects that we're seeing, to make sure we're establishing that. And then we can continue to work on setting a base and creating an incentive system for these areas, because that really gets a lot more into the economics of the land. Once you start to build in those incentives and bonus programs, you really need to have a better understanding of what the land economics and the development economics are for those to be effective.
So are you suggesting, or earlier on, were you suggesting that a system could be developed which incorporated incentives for, for instance, LEED levels or U.S. Green Building Council?
That's one, one option, certainly. Yeah, that would be the same as affordable housing or open space or active parkland or, you know, providing a van pool or something like that. There, just about anything that you want to encourage, you can build into an incentive system. There are some limitations, obviously, but...
Interesting.
Let's see, so minimum levels, so Commissioner Kirin, you had a lot of good topics on that. Hello, Deputy Mayor. Does anybody have other kind of guidance for Bruce at this time on the, on kind of the four items we have there? I still need to think more on the FAR issue, but I think we're all in agreement that we have, we need to, I think, everybody up here, I think, what I can tell is minimum, we need a minimum. And so, thank you for bringing those, it's kind of a starting point.
Actually, I got more out of this than you might suspect, so I think we're going to do pretty good.
Good.
And as you pointed out, we're going to have to do a lot of outreach on this one.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you very much, Bruce, I appreciate it. So we did just have the deputy mayor join us. Do you have anything you'd like to report, Deputy Mayor? Thank you for joining us.
Sorry I'm late.
You never have to apologize for coming, we really appreciate you being here.
Well, I'm assuming that you got the update from Council Action last night on the housekeeping amendment?
That's the next item on the agenda.
Well, I get to steal your thunder, then. We passed everything on the housekeeping amendments. I don't, we didn't make any changes, so. To your hard work, we didn't have to think too hard.
All right, great.
Yeah, I appreciate all of your work for that, and we were really happy with what we were given to just pass and let go through, so, thanks.
Fantastic. Well, that's a big thanks to staff, too, for always bringing us, yeah, things that we like.
And I also wanted to give a shout out to Commissioner Kurd, who actually spoke during the public hearing last night and was able to share some of the planning commission's discussion and support for the recommendation that went forward, and that was very helpful. Appreciated that.
Yeah, actually, that was really helpful, so I appreciate you being there.
My pleasure, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurd. Okay, so, let's see, if there's nothing else to report there, let's see, we'll move into the reports from staff and continue that.
Okay. So a couple of other things that the council did last night that I wanted to let the commission know about, because I know you worked a lot on the affordable housing strategy for the city last year. There was legislation passed in this last session, House Bill 1406, that allows cities to basically capture a portion of the state sales tax revenues for a period of 20 years. The council took action last night to initiate that process. They passed a resolution that indicates their desire to go forward. So there's additional steps that we'll have to take before the beginning of the year, and that will be happening. And that will allow the city to collect about $108,000 a year for the next 20 years that can be used for affordable housing, and we've got some flexibility in exactly how that can be applied for the use of, for the creation of affordable housing. It does not raise the taxes at all. It's based on the existing sales tax, it's just taking a portion that the state would normally keep and giving it to the cities that pass this particular action. So it was actually one of the, I think, one of the better actions that came out of the legislature this last session, finally giving us some additional funds to help support affordable housing. So the council will be discussing, before they enact that, how those monies might be used. One example that was talked about was, we could have an interlocal agreement with Arch, since we're already a member of Arch, to provide that funding, some or all of that to them, directly for projects. So there'll be more to come on that. Also, in the affordable housing arena, the council last night approved, I think it was a resolution, that agreed to continue to work with Imagine Housing on the development of Parcel A, which is the city-owned property on the riverside of 522. It's a little less than an acre. Imagine Housing has been working with the city on a proposal, they're going to be seeking some funding for that project, and they need to show that they have site control. So we're still working on a purchase and sale agreement that will not be done in time. So the action the council took last night was to provide them with the evidence they need to apply for the funding for that. It is all affordable at 60% of AMI or below. They are proposing a mix of 30, 40, and 60% AMI. It would be senior only, 55 and over, so I'd qualify at least one level. Yeah. Bruce can arm wrestle me for that one. But we're very excited about that. But we're very excited about that. The council was very enthusiastic about the project. So we're continuing to work with Imagine Housing on that project. That would be a big step forward, I think, for the city and for adding some affordable housing, particularly in our downtown. Related to that also, I just wanted to let you know that there's an ongoing effort in Snohomish County that started a few months ago, I think actually back in June. It's the Housing Affordability Regional Task Force that was created by Executive Summers, and it's a working group of elected officials from all of the city's jurisdictions in Snohomish County and some other interested parties as well, to come up with a recommendation, a report by the end of this year, that is an action plan for the county and the cities to create additional affordable housing. And they're looking at a variety of strategies. Two of our council members are involved in that, council members McNeil, I'm sorry, not McNeil, that's King County, council members Olson and Agnew. And then I'm also, I'm also involved in one of the work groups that's supporting that effort. So that will be coming out the end of the year. I wanted to bring it to your attention because a lot of the things that we're talking about are strategies that are in the city's action plan. So we're ahead of the game on that one and working to get those implemented. And I don't know, Deputy Mayor, if you wanted to add anything on those council actions for last night?
No, you're much more thorough than I am. The only thing I would say is, I had commentary about the 55 and older. Because we have so much senior housing within the city, I was really, I'm kind of anxious to see us do some more workforce housing. But it was explained to us that the funding, I guess there's more money available for senior, low-income housing, and also the size of the units, they were able to get more units than it penciled out because they're small, smaller units for singles and couples, so there's not the added need for rooms for children. Although, I would argue, singles and young married couples could still fit in those apartments. But, so that's something that Imagine Housing did mention, they were looking at other parcels downtown. So keep your fingers crossed.
Go ahead.
And then the other item that I wanted to discuss with the commission this evening is your October calendar. So currently, we're on the first third schedule for the Planning Commission. We have a few items for your October 2nd meeting, the Comp Plan Amendments that Bruce talked about this evening, we're planning for the public hearing that evening. Also, if necessary, we'll have the continued public hearing on the downtown open, I'm sorry, the downtown public space discussion. And then, related to that, possibly, if, depending on progress on our historic resources inventory that our Landmark Preservation Consultant is working on, we may have some information for you that evening on that. Currently, the only thing we were looking at for the 16th was continued public hearing, if necessary, on the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. I also bring that to your attention because the 16th and 17th are the State Planning Conference for the American Planning Association, Washington Chapter. And I know, I've got, Dave and Bruce are both going to that, I've got other staff going to that. I know at least one commissioner has expressed interest in that. If there is interest among commissioners to attend, I would encourage you to take a look at that. I'd be happy to send you the link for that.
Yeah, if you send the link out to all of us, that'd be great.
Certainly, we'll do that. And if you are interested, we can look at our budget and see if we have some funds to at least maybe offset some of the costs of registration for that. But because we'll have two staff going to that conference, we can hold a meeting, depending on what the topic is, and I can try to staff you on that. I'm not sure how that would work for any of us, but happy to do that if you want to go ahead and meet. Or we can just cancel that meeting or try to reschedule. Looking at your work program for the rest of the year, we do have several things that you're still working on, Canyon Park obviously being one of the big ones, and the minimum density that we just talked about. But we think we can, we can cancel the 16th of October and simply go to the November, I believe it's the 6th, would be your next regular meeting. And we would just schedule things on that and the November 20th meeting. And there would be two meetings in November because the 20th is not the day before Thanksgiving. And currently, I have, I am showing no one gone on the 6th, and only Commissioner Pi Strip absent on the 20th of November.
Okay. It would be okay with me, since you're going to be so short-staffed likely on the 16th, I mean, if you think that we have enough time, or we have enough dates and times between now and the end of the year, to be able to just hold that initial meeting October, if you think, there's nothing of pressing urgency, I would be okay with that, about us not having a meeting on the 16th. But I'll kind of leave it to staff's guidance for that. I don't want to just have a meeting because we, because we need to have, you know, we have this. But if we have something that we think we could work on without those other staff members, we could potentially do that. Oh, yeah, the 23rd, oh, yeah, I guess there is the 23rd and 30th as well, so.
Yeah, those are other options as well. So maybe what we could do is we could keep, keep those open as possibilities. If, at this point, we don't think that we're, that we have that much that we need to bring you, that we have to have a meeting, that second meeting in October.
Okay.
So I'm comfortable not having that second meeting from a workload standpoint. It also gives staff a little more time to prepare than for the November 5th meeting.
I think we are as well, so.
Okay. And if it looks like things, if things change, you know, then we can-
Maybe the 23rd or something, yeah. But the 16th, definitely not, yeah. That sounds like it, though.
Great.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Any member reports? Carson?
I have an exciting opportunity. The city of Kenmore is hosting Charles Marone, I think his name is, from Strong Towns. It's a kind of a blog slash publishing person who publishes information about community development and suburban revitalization. And he's actually coming to Kenmore City Hall on the 12th of September at 7:00 p.m. And for anybody who's interested in urban and suburban design developments in the past decade, there's going to be some really interesting discussion, I think, from community members and the development community at this meeting. I think that it's going to be really interesting. He's also holding a meeting in the city of Seattle during the afternoon, but I think that the Kenmore one is going to be tailored a little bit more. I'm planning on going, so if there's other people going to, we might need to schedule that as a public meeting. But other than that, that's an exciting event.
Strong Towns in Kenmore, September 12th at 7:00 p.m.
That's correct.
I wish I was going to be in town that day, I'm not, so.
Yeah, it's at City Hall.
Okay, it's City Hall. Great, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Kurd, for mentioning, if we do have multiple people going, please let me know so we can do our official notice of that.
For more, okay.
And he is also speaking at the Planning Directors Conference next week in Chelan, and I'll be attending that, so I'm sure I'll get a lot of the same information that you're going to hear there. I'm looking forward to that.
Any other member comments? Commissioner Kirin?
I guess I'd like to follow up on Deputy Mayor Dur's comment on affordable housing, and I think it's great that the city does have so much senior housing, but as a parent of 20-somethings, I know they're priced out of this community and they're going far and wide. I do know that under state law, there is greater leeway for low-income seniors than other groups, and that constrains what we can do. But it's nonetheless a need that we should keep in mind, the workforce housing, you know, getting into the workforce housing is a great need, so.
Well, and I pointed out, it was kind of a missed opportunity since that site is on a coming BRT line, which is a commuter line. So it was a little bit disappointing, but beggars can't be choosers.
Sure, they can. Okay, with motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned. See you all in, oh, later this month.
Yes, two weeks, thank you very much.